We will call to order today's Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
The pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Again, good morning. Before we start, I'd like to begin by asking for a moment of silence for a gentleman by the name of Frank Lemire. For those of you who may have seen the paper he passed yesterday, you know, personally, I've known Frank for years. Frank is a stalwart when it comes to the community, this state, this country, in regards to civil rights for all, particularly for Native American citizens and the work that he's put in across on several topics. You know, he leaves behind a family, but he leaves behind a whole slew of people that he's influenced and causes that will live beyond him. And I hope that next week, we can put together a resolution of appreciation for that family. But I would just like us to begin with a moment of silence for Frank Lemire and his family and the service that he's put in, not only to Nebraska, but this country. With that, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you all. With that, we are going to begin with the Board of Commissioners meeting and then recess out because we have a lot of GA staff here and we want to make sure that they can give back. With that, we'll call to order the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Here. We'll go straight into Item 3, which is recognition proclamations. Item A is recognition, reckon, resolution honoring Deb Redding, the Director of the Douglas County General Assistance for thirty-one, for a thirty-one-year career with the county and recognizing her commitment to serving those in need here in Douglas County. With that, I want to read the resolution and go from there. Whereas Deb Redding, a native of Council Bluffs, Iowa, began her career with Douglas County on June 8th, 1988, as a part-time PBX operator. And whereas in December of 1988, Ms. Redding transferred to the county's primary healthcare clinic, which was under administration of the Douglas County Health Center, to work as a medical clerk. And whereas in 1996, Ms. Redding accepted the position with Douglas County General Assistance, a career move that will eventually open many doors for her and allow her to directly help the county's indigent population and those most in need. And whereas Ms. Redding held several positions over the next two decades at general assistance, including social service technician, office manager, support service supervisor, and physical and administrative service manager. She was promoted to acting director on, of general assistance in March of 2012 and became the director in October of 2013. And whereas one of Ms. Redding's greatest achievements was helping general assistants to go paperless, allowing the department to operate more efficiently and effectively. In addition, she said her job has been rewarding each and every day as she, as she truly has had a hand in making a difference in people's lives. And whereas Ms. Redding said, "It has been an honor to continuously learn and grow during her career with the county." She credits the county's opportunities for advancement for shaping her into the leader she is today. Ms. Redding said she is looking forward to traveling during her retirement. Now, whereas it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby honors Deb Redding, Director of the Douglas County General Assistance for her thirty-one-year career with the county and recognizes her commitment to serving those Douglas County residents who are most in need. Is there a motion to second?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft. And Deb, if you want to come up, and I'm sure there'll be more comments, let me start by just saying, as I told you before, I can't be at the event Thursday, but I would, I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
The resolution doesn't say, but I can't say enough about just the leadership that you've had since you've been there, but also the work that you did to keep that ship steady in the, in the transition period during the death of Jan. And not only thank you for preparing and Lex Lita to come behind you, and she's going to be great and continue the work that you two done. So with that, I'm sure there's others, and we'll go down the line. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I, I'm a huge fan of Deb's, and it makes a big difference when you have a director who believes in the cause. And we see that not too often on the East Coast and in Washington. We have people running departments and they want to shut them down and they want to do things that are not helpful to the people who need the help. And Deb and her cohorts have been really terrific in delivering services to people who are really needed. So I want to thank you personally, Deb, for the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb, you know how much I respect you and thank you. I agree with everything Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Boyle said, and we cannot applaud you enough for your efforts, your meeting and exceeding the needs of our citizens. You're an embodiment of what county government is for. Thank you. Just want to thank you. It's a bit said, and it'll be said some more, I'm sure, but thank you so much for your service and enjoy your travels and just... Thanks.
Let's take it down a little.
Deb, congratulations on a great career as a public servant. You and your department do some of the best work that Douglas County provides to our citizens, and you don't get a lot of recognition, but believe me, we know how important it is to our community to have you and your department providing for those who need it the most. So thank you very much and enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
I want to vote no in hopes that you can't quit and that you have to stick around for a little while. You, you've been awesome out there, Deb. It's been a pleasure having you at the helm, and this is indeed where the rubber meets the road. This, this really is the, the epitome of the county's work is meeting the needs that are unmet, and you've been doing such a wonderful job of that. You'll be missed. Hope I see you over at Henry's once in a while.
Yeah, there you go. We will.
Well, congratulations, Deb, and I think one of the things that a lot of people don't realize is not only the excellent work that you and your whole department does in terms of taking care of our Douglas County residents on a work-related basis, you guys are like really super fun and raise a lot of funds and food for the community needs outside of what your normal duties are. And, and so we really appreciate that. You guys go, you know, all out whenever the fundraisers are there to be participating in. And again, leadership such as yours and getting your troops engaged in it is very welcome and appreciated. But good luck on your retirement and joy.
Thank you.
And Melissa, good luck, and we'll see you more often now. But again, thank you for your service, Deb.
Thank you. It's unbelievable to me that I've been here thirty-one years. That just seems crazy.
Wow.
You know, I mean, I walked in the door to go to the PBX office, you know, to do that, and then here I'm the Director of General Assistance, so that's really crazy to me. And yes, you guys have all hit the, all the staff are just fantastic.
Yep.
They're kind, compassionate people. Everybody's really behind the clients. We, they all try to brainstorm to come up with new things that we can do and better ways that we can collaborate with other departments, provide better service. So Melissa's definitely will keep the department going in the right direction, and she'll be here in twenty years. Just like me.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
There is, there is a motion to second. If you all will vote, then we'll go around and we'll take a picture with Deb.
Reminder that due to technical difficulties, Commissioner Boyle's vote does not appear, but he votes yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes. Seven to zero.
And I forgot to mention, there's a copy of the Open Meeting Act on the north wall of the legislative chambers if needed, and a automatic defibrillator in the back of the room if anybody needs that for health reasons. We will now open the Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 11th, 2019. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, is the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board?
Motion by Commissioner Duda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to comment on Board of Equalization related items that are not on the agenda for today. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We have four resolutions, Resolutions D, E, F, and G. What's the will of the board? There's a motion to approve D, E, F, and G, and adjourned by Commissioner Duda and seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
All righty. And Commissioner Kavanaugh, there you go. Motion passes seven to zero.
I call for a motion to come, to re-convene the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 1 is minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 11th, 2019. And Item B is approval of the, of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes. I'd like to have one of the claims removed for a separate vote. That's check number 120464 under the miscellaneous general account for $22.10 to publish a notice of the May 24th, 2019, JCDC, which is a private corporation's meeting. I objected on an ongoing basis to us privatizing our government functions, and this is a good example of that. Although the sum is minor, there's no reason that we should be publishing meeting notices of a private corporation. And they've certainly had ample resources spent on them by us to publish their own notice of meetings, which I think that they could possibly dedicate $22.10 to that. So I would ask for a separate vote on check number 120464, please.
I take that as a motion to separate that. Is there a second to that motion? That motion does, well, like a second. There's a motion to second to approve Items A and B. Please vote.
Well, I'm going to vote no on all of them, then, because we can't even get a purpose yet for a separate vote on a separate vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no. Other commissioners voting yes.
Item 2 is the consent agenda. There's thirteen items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, there's a second. Second by Commissioner Borgeson. Please vote. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Duda.
If I may, sir.
Okay.
I would like to pull out one item, not for individual vote, simply for discussion purposes.
Okay.
And that is the very first item. We have the Mayor Bennington here with us, as well as the sheriff. This is kind of a new deal for us. Mayor, would you be so kind as a...
Mayor, you want to hold? I'm going to approve everything else and then leave a...
Oh, all right, all right.
So with the consent of the board, we will approve everything except Item B. Commissioner Kavanaugh has a question.
And this is just an informational inquiry relative to Item F, a resolution approving the Third Amendment to the agreement between Douglas County and Region 6. You know, I'd just like to have the public be aware of what that encompasses. I don't know who from our staff would be in a position to address that.
Commissioner Borges?
I can do that. This is a partnership we have with the Douglas County Attorney's Office to pay for part of a attorney that deals with the mental health issues in Region 6 for Douglas County.
And the amount?
Forty-five thousand, I believe, is what it says.
And what does that attorney do relative to the mental health issue?
Mental health, for mental health stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we have a motion to approve everything except Item A. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item A is contract with the city of Bennington to allow the sheriff to provide law enforcement services to Bennington during the time period required to hire a new police chief. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Matthew John, the volunteer mayor of Bennington, Nebraska.
I wasn't going to add the volunteer part.
I like to let everybody know.
Bennington is without a police chief right now. They're, unfortunately, their chief passed away a while back, and they are posting for a new one, but they're kind of hurting for coverage right now, and it seems like a great opportunity. I mean, the sheriff has, has offered their help however they can to, to assist Bennington through this transition. And I don't mean to do your talking for you, but what we're looking at here is a six-month contract that either party can end anytime. I mean, if they get a new police chief, we will help them during a transition until they say we don't need your help anymore.
That's exactly right. Our, our last full-time officer recently resigned, leaving us with a staff of seven part-time officers that work an average of twenty to thirty hours a week. So of a hundred and sixty-eight hours of, of law enforcement coverage, that leaves us pretty short. So I came to visit Chief Wheeler and Sheriff Dunning and ask them if there's any way they could help us out with a couple shifts in this time of transition until we can get a chief hired. The, the job has been posted, and we're going to interview at least two candidates, as many as four, at the end of the month. Hopefully, we find a successful candidate out of that process. If we find that we're not there yet, we'll have to repost and, and try again. This is, to be emphasized, is a, is a temporary agreement. It is my hope and prayer, along with the council, that we can restore the Bennington Police Department to, to coverage status and, and make it even better than, than what it was before. So I, I just want to thank Sheriff Dunning and Chief Deputy Wheeler for all their help, and they've, they've been providing us a lot of assistance over the last few weeks as it is. Bennington's never been a 24/7 police department, and so we've always had some coverage from the sheriff when our officers are not on duty. And so it's not a huge change for the average citizen in what they may see on the street, but it's certainly warranted and desperately needed right now, so...
And this is on a revenue-neutral basis, I believe. I mean, they're, Bennington is simply paying the sheriff. I mean, nobody's making a profit or taking a loss on this.
These gentlemen want to speak to that? That's fine, or I'm, I'm told that we're covering the cost of that, so...
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom Wheeler, Chief Deputy Sheriff. Contract calls for eighty hours of coverage, of dedicated coverage. The city of Bennington will pay the cost of the deputy plus fringe benefits, so the entire cost of the deputy will be covered while they're working in Bennington.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Borges?
No, I just want to welcome you all here to the county board and thank you for the partnership that we've been able to garner here, hopefully after this vote, with you all, and let us know if there's anything else we can do.
I appreciate that greatly, Commissioner, and I thank all of you for your support and help in this time of need. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Kraft?
Matt?
Yes.
Don't forget July 13th.
I'm...
Is the Douglas County Fair Parade. It's a, at Village Point.
Okay.
It's only about three blocks.
Okay.
Even Mike and I, if Mike's in town, are going to be in the cane parade.
Okay.
Brigade, excuse me.
All right.
Unfortunately, some commissioners won't be there because of the NACO event.
That's a Saturday morning, I assume that you're doing that?
That will be Saturday morning at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
The, the fair starts on the 11th at Village Point. He's Bennington.
Well...
Well, yeah, but he's in Douglas County.
Yeah.
Okay? And we've invited all elected officials in Douglas County to participate in the parade.
Thank you, thank you.
I, I want to get every bit of advertising I can for this. Thank you.
No, we got one. Do we?
Well, there was one we get it.
Okay.
I would, I would move for the approval of Item A.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 4 is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioner-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we will go on to Item 6, and that's public hearing. Item A is proposed one- and six-year highway improvement plan for fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2025. This is a public hearing. We will now open the public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Dan Kudleck, County Engineers' Office. I'm here again. It doesn't seem like a year, but it's been a year since we last made a presentation. I have an overhead projection here that might be useful. Before I start the one- and six-year presentation, I, I'd like to enter into the record, if nothing else. On March 8th, 2019, there was a statute change, LB 82 law, that for this particular item, changes the fact that we do not, do not have to send this report down to the Board of Classifications and Standards in Lincoln, which became law back in, I believe it was 1969, fifty years ago. So they did a review of the procedures of reports and things of that nature. I'm sure Dan Etch probably is familiar with some of them. Different certifications and filings of different records and such are also implicated in this new law, which affects the departments. But I think the county board also has to sign our certification at the end of the year that we've complied with our filing of projects properly and recording the costs and et cetera, et cetera. We'll probably have to talk to Dan about, one- and six-year plan does have to be filed somehow as an official record, and I'm not sure how we're going to handle that, but we'll work that out. But anyway, it's a pretty major change. It pretty much leaves up to each municipality, county, cities to come up with whatever report they want to file, really, and when they want to file it. It's either by fiscal year or calendar year, and that's an option to, to everybody. We'll stick with the fiscal year if you don't mind, so that's how we pay for these projects. But anyway, with that, I think I tell you this every year, we have a very aggressive program again, and a number of projects that I'll go over quickly and then be glad to answer any questions for you. In particular, the, the one-year plan is the one of interest immediately. One job I've been talking to you about for years is, I didn't bring my pencil, 180th Street Dodge to Maple, basically. It's a huge federal aid project. We've been working on it for fifteen years, since 2006, fighting our way through the regulations primarily. We're now in the right-of-way phase. We're buying right-of-way. You might see that on the agenda of the last few weeks for buying right-of-way, expensive right-of-way, by the way. It's right in the heart of major development is occurring in that corridor. Project is currently scheduled for an October letting or bid opening. We hope to have the right-of-way purchased by next month, and we're trying our best to negotiate a fair value on the land with all the property owners. We have a couple of consultants that are doing that on our behalf, and it's a back-and-forth. We want this, we want that type of thing, and we're working diligently on that. But it'll be a project that'll take two to three years to construct. Once it starts, there may be some work this fall and winter on the bridge that goes over the railroad tracks and the old Lincoln Highway and that type of thing, but I don't believe they'll be doing much road work late this fall. Hit that in earnest in 2020 and 2021, construction seasons primarily, maybe even 2022. So that's something you'll be hearing more about as we get closer, and of course, that will affect and enhance the traffic, north-south traffic in that part of the city and county. 156th Street in Blondo, right, right about there, is a job that's currently underway out by our office. It's another federal aid project that we had a part of originally primarily north of Blondo and west of 156th Street. So we, cost shared with the city on the local portion, and we, we are paying for that with our ASAP funds, arterial street improvement program funding. That's been around for a number of years, and we've done major improvements with, with that concept. 168th Street last year, as you probably recall, was done intentionally with local money, ASAP money, in order to get that done before 156th Street started and 180th Street started. So we've been working with the city to coordinate all of these projects to try to minimize the interference to the traffic that goes north and south, which is substantial in that part of the city. This is another interesting project. 192nd Street, north of Dodge, is a new development. It's across the street from the hospital, south of the hospital, across Dodge Street. Two major developers are involved, one from Des Moines, others local. Very large commercial property is being developed. The road has to be increased in size throughout, and increased in size, there'll actually be three lanes in each direction. The state of Nebraska has committed monies to improve the intersection at 192nd and Dodge. They're going to look at different options on how to do that, but the capacity of that intersection has to be upgraded in order to handle the proposed traffic that's expected at that intersection in the future. So it's a huge project. The developer's paying for entirely the cost of the road improvement. The county, as normally we do, we will purchase the right-of-way. We, we like to purchase the right-of-way as our contribution on lots of jobs. We've found in the past, sometimes, you know, developers will pay anything they have to to get right-of-way, and that sets a bad precedent and comparables for future county projects. So we, we want to be in control of the cost of what's paid for that property out there, and some of it will be donated actually by the developer. It's just a few properties at the south end we'll have to buy a little bit to make this fit and work. Another interesting project that I know Commissioner Duda's familiar with is a drainage problem in Elk City. Right out here. Believe it or not, it's one of the... They'll hit that in earnest in 2020 and 2021, construction seasons primarily, maybe even 2022. So that's something you'll be hearing more about as we get closer, and of course, that will affect and enhance the traffic, north-south traffic in that part of the city and county. Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street in Blondo, right about there, is a job that's currently underway out by our office. It's another federal aid project that we had a part of originally, primarily north of Blondo and west of Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street. So we cost shared with the city on the local portion, and we are paying for that with our ASAP funds, arterial street improvement program funding. That's been around for a number of years, and we've done major improvements with that concept. Hundred and Sixty-Eighth Street last year, as you probably recall, was done intentionally with local money, ASAP money, in order to get that done before Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street started and Hundred and Eightieth Street started. So we've been working with the city to coordinate all of these projects to try to minimize the interference to the traffic that goes north and south, which is substantial in that part of the city. This is another interesting project. Hundred and Ninety-Second Street, north of Dodge, is a new development. It's across the street from the hospital, south of the hospital, across Dodge Street. Two major developers are involved, one from Des Moines, others local. Very large commercial property is being developed. The road has to be increased in size, tore out and increased in size. There'll actually be three lanes in each direction. The state of Nebraska has committed monies to improve the intersection at Hundred and Ninety-Second and Dodge. They're going to look at different options on how to do that, but the capacity of that intersection has to be upgraded in order to handle the proposed traffic that's expected at that intersection in the future. So it's a huge project. The developer's paying for entirely the cost of the road improvement. The county, as normally we do, we will purchase the right-of-way. We like to purchase the right-of-way as our contribution on lots of jobs. We've found in the past sometimes developers will pay anything they have to to get right-of-way, and that sets a bad precedent and comparables for future county projects. So we want to be in control of the cost of what's paid for that property out there. And some of it will be donated, actually, by the developer. It's just a few properties at the south end we'll have to buy a little bit to make this fit and work. Another interesting project that I know Commissioner Duda's familiar with is a drainage problem in Elk City. Right out here. Believe it or not, it's one of the highest elevations in the county, but they have drainage problems. And it's primarily because water, it's real flat out there, if you're familiar with Elk City. Doesn't drain very easily, let's put it that way. And the groundwater is, and there's some sort of a perched water table, a clay matter, where water can't go down deep into the soil, sometimes builds up and gets into the basements and floods them. And they have to pump the water out, and they're basically pumping, one house pumps it out, and the other house gets it, and then they pump it out, and the next house gets it, and it's a mess. So we've come up with a drainage concept plan that we think will enhance that tremendously, and we're hoping to do that this fall, Claire. So we'll start buying the right-of-way we need for that, and we'll see how that goes. NRD is a partner in this, and yes, they will reimburse us for some of the cost, and they have given us some of their advice as to how to handle it and concur with our consultant's design as the best plan to handle it, basically.
If I may briefly interrupt on that for a moment, I have been most impressed. A number of residents of Elk City came to us saying, "We've got some real problems here. There's no ditches, no water goes anywhere." I don't know that this is really the responsibility of the county engineer, but Dan Kudlec stepped forward with the help of the NRD. We've had a couple of town hall meetings out there to meet with the local folk, and I cannot thank Dan enough for what the county engineer has done to help these people. I'm not sure you had to, but it's the right thing to do, and I very much appreciate what you have done.
Yeah, well, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. The other thing I want to point out on this map is the circled projects in the blue are interlocal agreements between Douglas County and various developments. There's a lot of development going on in the perimeter of the city limits, basically, and those are the projects right now that are in the pipeline, either being built as we speak or they will be being built this construction season or next construction season. Our fiscal year 2020 is next after July, of course. So, but it just kind of shows you the magnitude of the developments pretty much has the city surrounded, again. And there's more that I didn't even show on here, that we're in the process of discussions and negotiations on cost shares through the interlocal agreements. One of them, right here, is right next to our Hundred and Eightieth Street project to the west. I think it's called Blondo Bridges. It's a single-family subdivision on the north side of Blondo. We're buying right-of-way for that. On the south side of Blondo Street to widen the road to provide turn lanes into the development, basically. And we have to coordinate that, of course, with our Hundred and Eightieth Street project, and we have been doing that. Another one is just north on Hundred and Eightieth Street, north of Maple, right here. New high school is being built. I didn't circle that because that's a cost share with the Elkhorn School System in Douglas County. It's just north of Maple on Hundred and Eightieth, and we're, of course, coordinating that project with our big project. And that school, I think, is scheduled to open in the fall of 2020, I believe. So a lot of activity out there for the school, of course. The other thing I'd like to point out, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions, is out here in that red circles, and one right here are old bridges that were constructed in the teens and twenties and thirties, primarily, all of them. They've been in existence for all those years. By the way, that last major flood we had inundated forty-five bridges out in, between the Elkhorn and Platte River, Douglas County Bridges. We didn't have any major damage to any of those old bridges. It was amazing to us. We assumed it would have been, but we had consultants hired to inspect them immediately, and so we knew what we had to address in that regards. And luckily, they were all standing and capable of taking traffic immediately, which, over time, helped everyone get around in that flood zone. But anyway, these bridges are structurally deficient. They're real narrow, most of them. Some are still trusses that are structurally deficient. And, you know, we've been doing these bridges for numbers of years. There are bond issues and all types of things. So, over time, we will have completed all of our bridges here, and we will have no more structurally deficient or structurally inefficient and deficient bridges, let's put it that way, which would be remarkable for Douglas County. I would think we would probably be the only county in the state of Nebraska that would be able to say that, to be honest with you. So something to be, we're proud of, anyway. We've been doing this for decades, really, keeping up with it. With that, I guess I'll close my presentation and be happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Before we go to commissioners, are there any other people in the audience that want to comment on it? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, Commissioner Craft and Commissioner Boil.
Yes, a very inclusive report. You answered many of my questions. Are there changes you had to make to the plan because of the flood?
No.
That is amazing, it really is. The minor issues you had to fix on the bridges that were caused by the flood, do you have a tally of what those minor issues all added up to?
No, we do not. That's interesting and a good question, Commissioner. We've spent about four, four and a half million on contracted work on the flood thus far. However, concurrently, our maintenance department, which I got to tip my cap to, worked diligently during this entire flood to try to do what they could to get the roads open. Oh, by the way, this is an interesting fact that kind of gets missed. Concurrently with the flood, we were dealing with the frost coming out of the ground.
Oh, yes.
And we get what they call frost boils. And what happens is the base of gravel roads becomes a quagmire, and you can't drive over them, literally. You get stuck. It's even hard to maintain them because our equipment gets stuck. So we have dumped, I think I last counted, was around sixty-five thousand tons of rock on our county roads, which is multiple times over what we normally do in a year historically. So maintenance also is going to repair these bridges, Commissioner, and they have taken care of the minor problems on the ones they needed to, but they will be working on cleaning out road ditches, fixing these bridges. Coverts are plugged. Drainage ways have changed totally in some areas. And this will be going on for months, if not years, to catch up with that, I'm afraid. It's just a massive, massive maintenance problem for the county. You know, I don't know if you, I'm sure you've been out there. You see they're full of sand, a lot of them, and other things. Corn stalks are a major issue. It's quite incredible. So that, we don't have a number for you yet.
Okay. Yeah, I was driving some rural county roads in Iowa, and some of these counties don't have the resources Douglas County has. But everything I understand is you're doing a very good job. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question about mass transit. I don't, I don't know whether you're involved in anything with MAPPA or anybody else, but there've been several articles, and I think a lot of people have noticed the congestion that's occurring just about everywhere. Are you really working with anybody on mass transit, I mean, along the interstate or anywhere else that could possibly bring some relief?
Directly, probably the answer is no. You know, we're focused on the county roads, but I do attend the Metropolitan Area Planning Association meetings, the T-TAC, the Technical Committee, and Kurt Simons on that committee, for example, and other planners that are highly involved with mass transit. And we talk about it, and certain federal funds are earmarked totally for those types of things, Commissioner. One minor thing that we do on our Hundred and Eightieth Street project is we're building a pedestrian bike trail along that entire corridor, you know, from Dodge to Maple and ultimately beyond. It'll go up to Flanagan Lake, Flanagan Lake someday. And we do those types of things on our road projects as far as that goes. But as far as mass transit, like the Orbit Bus and that type of thing, that's really MAPPA's company and others. The bike trails even are the purview of the NRD and the city planners and public works, of course, but...
And I understand that. That's what I expected, but it seems like we ought to be thinking about that because of the need, and of course, you folks are in charge of the non-urban area, I guess I'd say. And kind of in the future, this is where it's going to have to be, I think, is where the problem comes from. So many people, I mean, something as simple as the reversal of traffic on Farnham Street becomes an issue because people living along there are kind of tired of people from other parts of the city changing their street into one way certain times of day, and I'm not sure it's that efficient either. I used to live near there. Anyway, I was just curious. I think, I'd like to encourage you, I know you're involved with them, but somewhere, maybe we need to start thinking about what the role of the engineer ought to be, surveyor engineer, in active participation. I remember years ago, involving MAPPA, they reported on a poll that was taken by citizens, and nearly fifty percent of the people said they wanted to see mass transit, but I haven't really seen much happen unless, except for that Orbit Bus, which I'm very curious about. So, thanks. But I encourage you to tell them there's at least one commissioner that wants them to do something with mass transit.
Understood.
Thanks.
Two commissioners.
Sorry, yeah. Oh. No, Commissioner Duda.
Sorry, I didn't know what, like, just briefly following up on the spring thaw. This was a spring thaw on steroids. It was a very cold winter with a huge amount of moisture in the ground. It stayed cold very late into the spring, so the ground is frozen hard. Then all of a sudden, we get a fast warm-up and, of course, all the flooding that resulted from that. But it was also the softest ground I have ever seen, and we were getting flooded with, anybody who lived on a gravel road thought that their road and their road only was the one that was in need of, so sixty-five thousand tons of rock. I am not surprised. But I want to thank you for being as responsive as you were to a really challenging time on gravel roads.
Thank you. I'll take that on behalf of all the employees who did all the heavy lifting.
Sixty-five thousand tons worth.
Okay, that is all, Dan. With that, we will close the public hearing, and Mr. Boil of the board. Motion by Mr. Boil, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item seven, committee discussions. A is finance. Item one is the budget report, and I take it that's submitted?
As submitted. However, we will be meeting after this board meeting and possibly an executive session. We will meet after that at an open meeting to discuss the finances this year with Joe Lorenz. We'll be making a presentation for Mike and I.
Okay. Item G is the Human Resources Committee. Item one is the Weekly Personnel and Civil Service Report that is submitted. And item two is legislative issues. I know of any. So we do have a need for executive session. We reserve the right to enter into executive session in order to protect the public interest with respect to discussion regarding litigation. Is there a motion to second? Motion by, sorry.
Could I have a point of privilege real quick?
Sure. Motion by Commissioner Boil, second by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner.
I just wanted to announce, you all should have gotten an email, but this is a pretty important and neat thing that's going to be provided to our staff. So Nationwide is going to come in and do a women in retirement series, not only for just the women in county government, but for the spouses of those who work for us. And I was able to learn about this at the national level, and Nationwide is one of our providers, and it's a segment of what they have to offer, and it's a very, it's informative, and it's something that I think a lot of women don't think about necessarily. And it's a pure educational piece for them. So they're going to be in, June twenty-fourth, Monday, they're going to do two sessions. And Tuesday, they're going to do three sessions, and so I just wanted to announce that to make sure we save the dates for those.
My understanding is not just for women. Is that correct?
Right.
And I was on the retirement committee with NACO for about four years. It's an excellent committee. They know what they're doing, and everybody who wants to come should come.
Okay. With that, we do have motion to second to go into the executive session for litigation. Please vote.
Commissioner Capital. Motion passes seven to zero.
Are you going to be a yes, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to reiterate, Senator.
Second and yes.
All right, motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.